Well, good morning, everyone. We will get started. We've had additional people come in and I would welcome you. I do not see any elected officials to recognize this morning, but we recognize all of you as special guests and appreciate your being a part of your county government. Brian, if you'd bring the list forward and I will formally call the August the 14th Board of Commissioners Work Session to order. And we are indeed privileged and honored to have Chief Chaplain join me with the Sheriff's Office to come and bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge of flag.
Let's all stand, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much for the many blessings of life and Lord, we do thank you for where we live here, Father, and we know there's a lot of issues, Father, and we know there's a lot of problems, but we know that you always have the answer, Father. We pray God that you'd touch, we pray for the board, we pray that you'd touch, I pray that you'd lead them, I pray that you'd guide them, I pray that you'd give them wisdom, Father. I pray, God, that you'd just move in a special way, Father. Again, we pray for all of our officers and all of our first responders, Father, we pray that you'd keep them safe. Father, we pray that you'd build a hedge for everybody in Paulding County, Father. There's so many problems, Father, that, Lord, everybody's having to deal with it seems like these days, but again, Father, help us turn toward you and we thank you so much for the Lord Jesus Christ and the free salvation that's imparted to those who desire, Father. Again, Father, I pray that you'd bless this day, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Meeks, so much. Under minutes, the July 26, 2018 work session minutes and the July 26, 2018 board meeting minutes are available. And also, the public hearing minutes for the 9:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. public hearing are available for your review also. Under announcements, it's also a thrill for me today to talk about Jeff Davis, Truth and Nature, but before he comes up, we wanted to watch a video about his ministry in Paulding County.
Since 2009, Truth and Nature has been able to work with over 300 young men from fatherless and single parent homes. These boys come from different backgrounds and single parent situations. Beginning right here in Dallas, Georgia, God has moved in the hearts of many men in different communities to see this ministry grow. Truth and Nature is an outdoor ministry and mentoring organization for young men growing up without a father in the home. As God continues to move and lead this ministry, we see men in the community following that lead to reach, inspire, support, and engage these young men from fatherless homes through His creation. Our programs consist of things a father and son do in the outdoors and take a concentrated time to walk alongside them during their middle and high school years, mentoring them while also sharing the love of Christ and pointing them to Him as the eternal Father. We have a unique opportunity right here in our Dallas, Georgia camp to reach more young men in Paulding County and the surrounding communities. We have a camp facility that can work with up to 30 young men per weekend along with 10 mentors to come alongside these boys. Our current program director, Don Brooks, has been running at capacity on and off a waiting list for over a year now in the current set of programs that are running. In Paulding County alone, depending which resource you use, there are a little over 9,000 or 24.6% of children growing up in a single parent home, many of which are boys without a father in their life. The need is there for these young men to have a role model in a mentoring setting. Our programs are proven over these years with many young men making positive choices and turning their life over to Christ. So through some ministry partners in the Paulding community such as West Ridge Church, the Rotary of Paulding County, Mars, and others, we now have the opportunity to serve more young men at our camp facility right here in Dallas. We have funding to get this started, facility improvements are already happening, and boys are on a waiting list to get into the program and we have some mentors that are ready to get started as well. So what we're looking for is a program director, someone to help coordinate and spearhead the second set of programs for the fatherless and single parent boys right here in Dallas, Georgia. So I'm asking, are you a Christian outdoorsman with a heart for leading and shaping young men? Could you give some of your free time to help further this effort? If that is you, I'm asking that you get in touch with me to help spearhead this effort and join our current team in Dallas, Georgia to reach more young men. You see, we have a proven model to put this in place and we'll make the startup as easy as possible, walking beside you in every step. So join us in this effort to help break the fatherless cycle, one boy at a time. Begin to pray about this and if this is the right direction for you to give back to your community and help shape these young men by God using your talents, both in leadership and in the outdoors, then take a look at our website and hear from boys and moms and how this program has made the difference. And when you're ready, get in touch with me to learn more. Thank you for taking a minute to learn more about this opportunity and we look forward to hearing from you. Tight lines, steady aim, cleansed heart.
That won't bring a tear to the eye and maybe we don't have Carrie Davis, the better half of this couple with us today, but we do have the real Jeff Davis and so good to have you, Jeff, you're such an addition to our community.
Well, I appreciate it. I appreciate the opportunity to get to share with everyone just about Truth and Nature, our current needs, that kind of thing. You know, as you said, we don't have Carrie here with us, she had other things she needed to get done this morning, but my wife and I are co-founders of Truth and Nature. We started it right here in Dallas in 2009 and so we're almost coming up on 10 years. And what we've seen God do and through the people of Paulding County is expand these programs. We've now got chapters in five states across eight locations. We've seen this just grow and as you heard on the video, we're at capacity in our Dallas, Georgia camp. We've got numerous boys on a waiting list trying to get into our programs and we're really looking to expand our programs. What Truth and Nature is, is an outdoor ministry for boys that are just growing up without a father, that are in a single parent home. And we do weekend programs where we have a group of men come in and they're mentors to walk alongside these young men through middle and high school. We've seen numerous positive decisions, we've seen these young men walk away from at-risk behaviors, make decisions for the Lord. We've seen just numerous things from these young men. And we get referrals now from the Department of Juvenile Justice, we're getting referrals from, we actually get a lot of referrals, you know, from this county and surrounding counties because people have heard about our programs. And so, we're putting the need out there and I appreciate the opportunity to put this need out there for that. We do have, since putting this video out, we have a temporary solution to get some of the boys off the waiting list this fall, but we're still looking for that program director to get the full new chapter of programs up and running to get more boys involved because, as you heard, there's over 9,000 children just in Paulding County growing up in a single parent home. And a lot of those are boys that just need that solid male role model in their life and we're offering that. Like I said, we've been doing this for 10 years, worked with over 300 boys right here in this community, so we appreciate it, we appreciate the opportunity. I don't know if there's any other questions or anything, we're always looking for partners, there's a lot of people in this community that have partnered with us to make these programs happen. These are free programs, we don't charge these single moms a dime to send their sons through this. We've got local partners that have partnered with us to make these programs happen and we're very blessed and very fortunate in the fact that we can do it and not charge for these services or anything like that.
Isn't one of the drawls all the good cookie?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Ms. Leslie Brooks is here, her and her husband, Don, run our chapter right here in Dallas and her along with her team, boy, they feed these boys. It takes a lot of food to feed 30 boys over a weekend, so they can eat. But they talk about how good the food is and even the mentors, you know, they get to eat real good too.
Let's give Ms. Brooks a hand.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Jeff, thank you for being here. Any questions from the panel here?
Thanks for what you're doing. The late Sir Kathy of Chick-fil-A wrote a book and always said, and one of the things he always worked on was it's better to build boys than to mend men.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a good program.
I agree. Thank you, guys, thank you for the opportunity.
There'll be a lot of people out there on Channel 23 that hear this also and also on Channel 23 I'd like for them to hear this morning, it's gonna happen in just over a month, our Ride for Wishes, and I've asked our county administrator to come up and just announce that one more time. First annual.
Good morning, I appreciate the opportunity to come back up and talk a little bit. I want to thank Stacy, Hannah from the chamber, she's here today and she let me come in last week and talk at the Chamber Luncheon and we're appreciative of that. So we're just trying to get the message out. September 15th is the date that we're looking at and all the proceeds go to benefit the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Georgia. So we were here last meeting and we have the CEO of Make-A-Wish Georgia here and he spoke to you guys to let you know what was going on with that. Again, I just appreciate the opportunity to go ahead and once again, let the citizens know, let everyone know about the ride coming up. We're looking for riders and we're looking for sponsors, so if you're interested, just go to our website and on the website there's a link to it. You can actually go online to not only participate as a rider but also as sponsor, so.
What about volunteers on the day of the event?
We do need some volunteers. A lot of our departments have come forward and several of the agencies we have, we've got some employees that are gonna volunteer their time on that day, several different departments, but we could always use the help.
Can they just contact you?
It'd be great if they contacted my office, it'd be great. We'd be happy to sign folks up to do it, but we're looking forward to it and as the chairman said, this is our first annual, so we're looking for this event to be great and to expand on it next year.
What's the charge to register? I've got a ton of grandkids.
There's a fee structure, typically it's $20 and that includes a commemorative t-shirt that we'll have, it's a long sleeve tee which is always great, especially at that time of year. It'll have, this first year we'll have our logo on the front and then the sponsorships on the back. All the platinum and gold sponsors will put their logos or the name of a family, for example, if a family just wants to sponsor one of those levels. And then for riders, I think it's under, I'm gonna ask Felicia, 10? Under 10, I think it's $10 and that includes also a youth t-shirt to go with that, so that'll be the nice takeaway that they'll have. And as all of y'all know, I do have a history working with Make-A-Wish and have another event that I'm involved with, them in another county, and we do a long sleeve t-shirt and that's a really big thing that people love to have. And so I'm looking forward to seeing a lot of t-shirts, a lot of long sleeve tees floating around the Dallas and Hiram and Paulding County area in the next few months as we move forward with this project.
One distance?
That's a great question, Commissioner Crowe, and I appreciate you asking that. It is, it's not a race, it's a ride, first of all, and so we've got two different rides in one. One is gonna be a family ride, which will be approximately up to two miles in length and our hope is to have it, all the riders will congregate here in the morning and then will leave here, go up to the Terradrum and Trailhead and then the family riders will go towards our chamber and we'll have a turnaround there. And then the other part of it is we'll have a ride for folks that just want to get out and do up to 22 miles. And the beautiful thing there is, if you only want to ride five, that's great, if you want to ride 22, that's great too. So you can do as much or as little as you want, but it'll be up to 22, which equates basically from here to our county line, where the county line is with Polk at our fantastic tunnel on the trail. And that'll be the turnaround place for that, so that'll be approximately 22 miles. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, a carryover from last meeting, I had just one of these, this is, Atlanta doesn't mean Atlanta Airport, it's Atlanta Region Transit Link, which was House Bill 930 and Paulding County will be included in the consideration of the 14 county region, 10 districts, I believe it is. But these are available on the back table, there's a lot of information in here on how all the transit operations that exist now around Atlanta will be consolidated and it'll be driven by a regional approach. So grab you one of those if you're interested. Now, under invited guests, we have none, under bid awards, discuss action to award the contract to Southeastern Site Development in the amount of $780,790 for the Greenfield Road widening and culvert replacement project. And Ms. Pollard and Mr. Jones are gonna answer questions on this.
Finance received both of these bids and they're being recommended award to the low bids, so if it's okay, I'm gonna ask George just to present them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. As Tabitha said, we received bids for the Greenfield Road widening and culvert replacement project from four bidders. Southeastern Site Development was the low bidder for this project at a total of $780,790. The work consists of installing two culvert replacements on Greenfield Road, adding left and right turn lanes at the intersection of 278 and Greenfield and putting in a center turn lane on Greenfield that will extend down to Greenbrook Drive. The work area is approximately 800 feet long. The low bid was within, I believe, 8% of our engineers' estimates, so we feel pretty comfortable going forward with this bid. Southeastern Site has done work previously in the county, we've been happy with their results, so at this point, we recommend awarding this contract to Southeastern. And I can answer any questions if y'all have any.
Any questions? We'll move on to number two, which I think you're responsible for, also, discuss action to award the contract to Barto Paving Incorporated in the amount of $494,614.98 for the intersection improvement project at East Paulding Drive and State Route 120 Dallas Highway, it's right there at the county line, right?
Yes, sir, yes, it's post one. Again, this one here, we received six bids and Barto Paving was the low bidder. The work consists of adding turn lanes and radius improvements on East Paulding Drive and also some traffic signal phasing changes that will help this intersection work better, particularly in the morning. If you're there during the a.m. peak hour, traffic backs up on East Paulding pretty significantly, so we're adding a 175-foot left turn lane at the intersection of East Paulding, which we believe it's, and it's shown in simulations to help improve signal operations greatly. GDOT has concurred with us on this request, so we've got that approval. We did enter into a development agreement back in February 13th, y'all approved of, with the entity that's developing the northeast quadrant of this intersection for $150,000 to put in turn lanes for their development along with, they provided some right-of-way that we could construct this project in. So we have that funding that will be put forth towards this, $494,000. The rest of the funds for this project will come from SPOLOST funding. We've done several projects before with Barto Paving, the last one they did, I believe, they had a sidewalk project with us about a year ago, but they also did the work on Bob Grogan Drive for North Paulding High School and we've been very happy with that. So, like I said, we recommend awarding this contract to Barto Paving and I can answer any questions if y'all have any.
Everybody good?
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Under reports from committees and departments, pleasure to have Ann Lippman, update us, Community Development Director, to give us the update on the building permits and the business licenses.
I feel like we're having a few technical difficulties here, we have a screen now, but the, looks like the screen is slowly coming up.
Ours has been flashing all morning. Yours is the only good one.
I can see it on the screen, but I don't know how to get it up on that screen, so I may have to describe that unless Rebecca can. It's right there. Okay. All right. Thank you, as always, for letting me come in and share some of the building permit and business license data. First of all, total permits issued, they went down a little bit this month. In July, we had 575 and in, or in June, we had 575 and went down to 498 in July. Each month, I track the single-family detached and new, non-residential new and additions. The single-family went down for the third month in a row, so for this year, we've had a total of 9,64. We have had 108 new, or non-residential new or additions and while we were doing the budget talk, I just did some quick numbers and that's, based on the value, that's 83% residential versus 17 non-residential. For the months that I've done this, I've always told you, broken down by post, and I decided to mix it up since I think for the past 91 months, post four has always been the winner of that. I think post one won one month and I'm gonna go back and figure out when that was, because I remember I was like, wow, post one had more than post four. So for a couple of years, I've been providing data to the school district based on high school and middle school zones. Those are smaller areas than the post because there's five high schools and there's nine middle schools. So here's just the raw data going back to 2010. North Paulding is the highest percentage with 40% and I decided to have a little fun. School did just start in the past two weeks, so I have each of the logos or mascots for the high school. North Paulding has 53% of the building permits, followed by East Paulding with 21%. And I'll send everybody the breakdown that shows each one. As far as middle schools, not surprisingly, McClure Middle School and Moses Middle School are the two biggest, followed by PB Rich Elementary School, which kind of falls in line with North Paulding and East Paulding having the most permits, so there's the breakdown. And those are brother school colors, but I didn't have enough room to put all the mascots in there. So I just thought that was, it's something I provided to the school district for several years and they find it very informative and one of these days I will break it down to elementary schools, but there's a lot more of them, so it would take up probably a week to do that. Occupational tax certificates, as of yesterday, we had 3,066. This shows the breakdown of new and renewal, most everything's been renewed by now, renewals will start up in October. And the breakdown between home occupation and commercial, 27% are commercial and 73% are home occupations. So be glad to answer any questions and I'll be glad to share this information with all you guys and look forward to sharing data with you next month.
Any questions, comments, or questions? I told you not to talk before.
He's turning the microphone off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public participation on agenda items, none. Consent agenda item, we have two. Number one is to authorize the chairman to execute a Norfolk Southern Standard Pipe License Agreement allowing Paulding County Water System to construct a 54-inch steel casing via jack and bore across the railroad right-of-way for the finished water transmission main. And number two is acceptance of streets for perpetual maintenance, copper leaf in post one and copper stem drive in post one. Would any of the commissioners like to transfer one of these two items over to regular business? Hearing none, stay consent agenda. Under old business, we have none. Under new business, we will, public hearing regarding the application of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. And we are going to open a public hearing again and we're honored to have Deputy Chief Hutton, Colonel Hutton, to come up and to give us a description of this and then I'll ask for public comment.
Thank you, sir. On this grant, we've been receiving this grant for several years now, but they've awarded us, or we're in the process, of $16,885 this year. Last year, we were allotted roughly the same amount and actually, last month, they finally sent the finalization paperwork that y'all were able to sign off on force, Ms. Lonnie and Chairman Cormichael, so it's a process and it takes some time. With this grant money, this year, we're still, for the last three years, we've been trying to get funds to outfit our deputies with ballistic plates that stop rifle rounds and also helmets. So the majority, or half of these funds, about 50%, will be going towards that, trying to complete that. Currently, we have all of our patrolmen and our school resource deputies, they are outfitted with that equipment. Granted, we hadn't had to use it, but back in 2014, and if I'm not mistaken, it was July 14th when we had an assailant down on the south side of the county, off of Pine Valley, that was armed with a rifle and this equipment was not available to our deputies. We've had it for numerous years for our tactical units, but for our patrolmen, it was not. And that situation really opened our eyes and with the help of Ms. Tabitha, we found some money that we put in place to get that in motion. So I'd like to continue that program and finishing outfitting the rest of our deputies that are also in need of it for those times that rise. The other things that are listed in there is for different units. The other probably big ticket item is a, what we call a rack vest, which is, we use it in court, in jury trials and things of that nature. When we have somebody that's a pretty, I don't know the right way to put it, but somebody that's a pretty bad dude, so to speak, and we put this vest on them, it's a little bit smaller than the vest I have on today, but it goes under the clothes and if they act out or they try to run, you hit a little button and it gives them a jolt, some juice and it helps incapacitate them so you can get them back into, under control. Other items in there are day-to-day items that we currently use throughout the Sheriff's Office and different divisions. We got some vehicle equipment and things of that nature in there as well, so I'll be willing to answer any questions that you may have.
This is an official public hearing, so perhaps before questions, is there anybody, any of the citizens that would like to speak on this topic, this grant? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and just open questions up to the panel.
Okay, sure.
I know Commissioner Crowe's gonna have something to talk to you about that vest.
No, I'm not.
Next time we have training, I'll invite y'all, y'all can try it out. We have one currently. It works pretty good.
I don't want the button.
Ma'am?
I don't want the button.
Yeah, yeah, everybody wants the button.
Well, thank you, Colonel Hutton.
Yes, sir, thank y'all, appreciate y'all.
Karen, enabling legislation allows us to alter the agenda as necessary and we have two of our state delegates here today. We've got Representative Micah Gravely and Senator Mike Dugan, who have come to share with the board on an issue that involves real estate. And in interest of their time, and I think we can handle this in 10 to 15 minutes, I would like to ask for a motion that we interrupt the agenda and adjourn to executive session so that we might hear from them and we've got other things on the, for the executive session, but we will not cover them, we'll just come back in here and finish the agenda. That would be my plan or my direction. So may I get a motion that we adjourn an executive session?
For real estate.
For real estate, thank you.
I move we adjourn to second executive session for real estate?
Yes, adjourn to second by Commissioner Crowe. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. At this time, I'll call the work session back to order and announce that no action was taken in the executive session. In resuming the agenda where we were, it would be new business number two, which is to discuss action to adopt Resolution eighteen dash thirty-six, setting the millage rate for the county M and O. Ms. Pauling.
Okay, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna try to be as short as I can. This, the next three, four items that you have in front of you are regarding the millage rate. They've established what the tax rate will be for the upcoming year. The first one is the M and O, and we have a, we've completed three public hearings and advertisements to keep the millage rate the same at six point five. If it's okay, I'll go ahead, and then y'all can just discuss, will that be okay? If I go ahead and talk about all three, or would you rather read them all?
I was thinking we'd talk about one at a time.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so on new business number two, on the, on the millage rate, let's open that up for, well, just open discussion here, the, we've already had it brought out in the public hearing, that our tax base is a problem, because so much of it is a percentage of the homeowners that are responsible for the, the large percentage of tax base, about eighty-eight percent, which is not compared with well, with surrounding counties. Before I came on as chairman, one of the things that I would mention is numerous constituents talked about the business application process, the permitting process, and how difficult it was. So, one of the early goals of myself and the board is to try to alleviate that. And working with IT Director in the back there, Will Lyons, we have been working diligently to have the right funding for personnel and for the hardware, software required to have what we call twenty-four seven government. So, if you so choose to apply for a business in, at two AM in the morning in your pajamas, that you would be able to do that. Cherokee County has this opportunity, Cobb County has this opportunity, other surrounding counties have it, so we want to be competitive. And we don't want to have a reputation as being a county that's difficult to do business with. But with the rollback budget, without any tax increase at all, we don't, we don't have the capability to bring on the personnel that Will Lyons has requested as the Director of IT. We don't have the capability, if you shift over to public safety, to bring on the personnel that Sheriff Gullis thinks we need to have. And I could go right through Parks and Rec, Michael Justice in the back, we have more parks, we have more acreage to mow, we have more maintenance required. So, the troubling thing to me, in not being willing to adjust our needed taxes to take care of business, is that we have a goal like twenty-four seven government, and so, well, we just can't do that right now. So it drags on, let's say it kicks the can down the road. The, the other thing that I would mention is that the millage rate's not changing, and in my budget, in the chairman's budget, at six point five. But all that would do, or what that would do is allow us a little bit of infrastructure improvement. If we roll back to the six point zero, seven, nine, we're just gonna do basic, basic service without any ability to work on a project, like bringing water, one of Tony's passions, to areas of post four. We're not, we're not gonna be able to bring infrastructure of sewer, so that other commercial ventures might be able to tap onto that sewer and increase the commercial and industrial part of our tax base. So, yeah, I don't like to raise taxes, I don't like to think about raise taxes, but if your family grows, it costs you more for food and cheerleader uniforms and a band instrument. If your, if your school's growing numbers, you gotta have more desks and books and, you know, more schools. And likewise, when your county grows, you're gonna have to raise the tax level, or you can't get to where you wanna go. In two thousand and eight, it was brought out in the charts. In two thousand and eight, we, our tax digest was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher than it is today, but we have thirty-five thousand more people. The math just doesn't work out. And, yeah, we gotta work on economic development, most definitely. We've got to bring commercialization into the county, more commercial companies. But I've communicated every month with the commissioners, and they know where I stand on it, but most of you in the audience don't. So, yes, I'm, I'm for keeping the millage rate the same, and that does cause a tax increase. It'll cost you, if you own a two hundred thousand dollar house, it'll cost you four dollars and thirty-three cents a month extra.
Dave, I appreciate you bringing that out. The infrastructure, my, my pet peeve has been and always will be water, especially to those who have no water, the wells have gone dry. And I put that above anything else in the county, and I've said this more than one time, you can live without anything in your house other than water. However, water is not paid for with taxpayer dollars. This is through the Water Authority, and they raise their own money in the sewer. So, having said that, I realize that our tax base is rooftops. And we keep saying this without saying it, the more rooftops we get, the more we overload our roads, our schools, our services from the county, we need to address that, and we have, I believe, somewhat as a board, doing a moratorium and changing some stipulations, but some of the things we're talking about here, we're talking around them and not about them. So, there's other ways to look at this, other than the fact that let's just raise taxes.
Other comments on new business number two?
Dave, I agree with what you said. And I have been the one that has been beating that drum for the last five years. There's a cost of doing business, there's a cost of level of service. I, I personally think that cost is around six point five. Last year, there were three of us that voted for that cost of six point five. It was myself, Mr. Davis, Mr. Carmichael. We worked on that budget for a long time. Last year, I felt like that's where we should be. And my opinion hasn't changed this year on that, as far as what we did last year. There had been several of us highly criticized for taxes. Highly. And two of them down on the other end didn't deserve it. Didn't deserve it. Eight years ago, when I got in office, somebody said, "You got a microphone, use it." And I have. I've never said anything that was wrong to anybody, I've always treated the public and anybody that came up there to speak with respect, and I'll continue to do that. But them two on the far end got abused over raising taxes, and the two on the far end did not do it. So, guys, I apologize that y'all got wore out for it. Should've been directed only to me. But that's not the only thing, and that's okay. And I am very good with it. But when you go through what you go through the last six months, and you're hung out to dry on taxes, you have to look at the whole thing. I've had some very close friends of mine call and share some long conversations when it comes about taxes. I've had people that I don't know call, talk about a lot of things when it comes about taxes. And had some good conversations about it, and they all bring up very good points. All of them. I haven't had one call, not one call, that's told me to leave it at six point five. Not one call. I believe in the process, I believe in going through the process, and I believe the process gets things out. I think a little bit more of the process today's gonna get a few more things out, hearing a couple of items down. We went ahead and advertised, so that we could have the hearings, so we could hear from the public. That allows us to do that, and it allows us to do anything from the six point five, rollback to whatever, or anything in between. And again, I believe in the process, and we've done that, we had the last public hearing this morning, and here we are now. And sometime this afternoon, two o'clock or after, we're gonna go ahead and vote on these and get this done. Last year, I don't know, it could be a coin toss, whether it was the third vote was myself, or the third vote was Ron. I don't know who wants to take credit for it, I, I feel like I took credit for it through time. But Ron was there with me, he kinda said the other day, maybe he took credit for it. I don't know if either one of us really wants to take the credit for it, but I'll do it. I took it, I did it, the third vote for six point five. But if you go back through the videos, and you watch what's happened in the last four years, when Tommy Graham was sitting down there where Commissioner Colette's at, we both were preaching the same, same thing. There's a cost in the level of service and a cost of doing business. But after what we've went through, we've worked on another budget, and we've worked on another budget with Tabitha. And not that we can't make some changes or amendments or anything else, but we've got a budget that we can pass today that's for the rollback, and not a six point five. I don't know who's gonna be that third vote, I might take credit for that today, but I'll be voting for a rollback today. And after what we've went through, I don't feel like I have a choice. Do I a hundred percent think it's the hundred percent right thing to do? No, I don't. But because of the circumstances that have happened over the last three or four months, I feel like in my case, it has to be the right thing to do. We have voted through time to build a new park out in post two, and I consider the voters voting for that too, because they voted for Splosh. Mr. Justice needs people to take care of that park. And a rollback doesn't allow him to have everything, he needs to do what he needs to do. The employees have always done what they can do, whether the public thinks they have enough to work with or not, the employees have done what they can do in their departments with what we've given them through the years, whatever that is. And, and I'm sure the employees and department heads will continue to do that. We've got a new jail coming online, it'll be coming up soon. Sheriff's gonna need some other people to be trained sometime later in the year, to be prepared. And so there's a lot of things to consider. But for now, I'll quit using the microphone, wanted to let you know where I stood, and wanted to apologize to the two men down at the other end of the table for what you've had to go through.
No need to apologize, we signed on, and we'll take it.
Thank you.
Not much has changed in post three since, since last year. Last year, I got a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, asking to please roll it back, that some people in this county live on very fixed incomes, and their incomes are not going up. And I understand you've got one side where you need, and there are things we as the county need, but you can't just say, okay, all the single moms and widows and low income, you know, I don't care about you. You represent them all. And again, this year, I probably got about thirty, between phone calls and emails, more phone calls and actual conversations, very few emails this year. Todd said he didn't get any emails, I got one email asking for an increase, and that was from our chairman. Other than, other than that, I didn't get any. Same thing, same thing I heard last year. People are still hurting out there, fifty dollars makes a difference, twenty-five dollars makes a difference when you're living on social security. So I just wanna say that and just let you know, when you're sitting up here, you gotta weigh both sides. The people put you here, the people take you out, but do you listen to the people, or do you do something else? So that's, that's the decision you have to make. And usually, when I'm faced with that, I usually choose to listen to the people, unless they're saying something ungodly, and to ask for a rollback is not ungodly. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll speak for a minute, Dave. It's a tremendous responsibility to sit in this chair. There's a lot of things that this board does, but the, the passing of the budget and setting of the millage rate is, is one of those considered to be maybe a necessary evil. There's, there's a saying that I like, it's, it's taxation is theft, and it is. It's legal theft, but if you don't believe it's theft, try not paying your property taxes here, and see how that, see how that works out for you. There's a time to increase revenue on the, within the government. Came to a position last year, I was the, I guess it'd still be to be determined if I was the second or the third vote, but I was one of the three. Felt like it needed to happen last year. It's not a vote that I liked to cast, because I hate taxes. I don't like paying them, and I don't like, I don't like them, but they're, again, necessary evil. Last year, I felt we were in a position that revenue needed to, revenue needed to go up. And, and I don't believe we're in a position, yeah, I don't believe we're in that same position this year, no. Does that mean we're gonna get to do everything that we would wanna do? No, it, it doesn't. There's another saying about, you'll hear it a lot of times, when people are running for office, you'll hear, oh, we need to run the county like a government, we need to run the county like a business. And as far as being responsible with money and spending less than you take in and all, that's, that's very true. But companies exist to get bigger, to take in more money to increase their profit. And, and we exist to provide services for the citizens who live here. The feedback I've heard from constituents that have called me or grabbed me in the grocery store and, they like to grab you in the grocery store, by the way, if y'all don't see me in the grocery store, I'm looking for cereal and, and I wanna talk about my tax assessment. But that's okay, we, we enjoy that. But the, what I'm hearing from folks is, is they're not looking for that type of growth in their county government. So, we've been working, I know, up until last night, I think I got off the phone with Ernand, and it- Up until last night, I think I got off the phone with Ern and it, it's probably close to eleven o'clock last night. Um. And all of us have been working on this, uh, trying to come up, come up with where, where are we gonna be, uh, with this, the. The rollback budget that Todd mentioned, uh, includes things that, um. I felt were necessary, and I'm happy to be able to support that.
One other story, and I'll make it quick. Seeing, um, friend John Dean in the back there is gonna get involved in. School budgets and other challenges. My dad, uh, God rest his soul, was, uh, the superintendent of, uh, city schools in Chattanooga, Tennessee. Uh, I was like junior high school, but, um. There, there are, as all these commissioners have said, tremendous challenges. Um, I think I live on a path. I live on a path with eight families and lived there for thirty-five years. Uh, it was gravel. A lot, since it's hilly, it's a lot of big gravel. And when my oldest daughter was able to drive, she only knows fifty miles per hour. So she'd drive down her three quarters of a mile path, uh, at fifty miles an hour. Well, it's not real good for the tires and the front end. Uh, so in nineteen ninety-two, after we lived there, uh, five years, we got the community together, the eight families. And, you know, we, we got a pretty good deal here with this asphalt company listed asphalt our, our path. And only five of the eight families wanted to participate. Uh, I hope you can see the tax parallel. We don't, we don't have, uh, whatever the, the percentage is. What is five eight's got? We, we don't have that ability with, uh, paying our taxes. So sixty-two percent on, people lived on our path were, were willing to pay the asphalt roads. Uh, and, you know, it has been for a long time now, and, uh, the, uh, vehicle maintenance has gone way down. Can you think of Paulding County with all gravel roads? Uh, really, the reason I brought my dad up was because he, he always would say, it's a privilege to pay taxes. It's a privilege to pay taxes and share expenses, uh, in a county or in a school system. Uh, so. Just share that, um. You, you know, you want the phone to answer it when you dial nine one one, you get your garages on fire because. You got a shore or something, and you'd like the fire department to show up. We all know those things. It was brought up in the very start of the public hearing with that, uh, video. And we, we know we've got plenty of challenges in the county, and, uh, we'll face those.
And they're gonna continue to answer the phone.
So new business number three is discuss action to adopt resolution eighteen dash thirty-seven setting the millage rate for the fire district.
This is the same type resolution. Um, the fire district is a special district within the county, but it's countywide. And this sets the millage rate at three point one oh, and it basically funds the fire department. Uh, which is, um, a growing fire department. They're looking to add a new fire station as well as at least nine, um. Firefighters to staff that fire station. So this, this will fund those.
Any discussion?
No, that's, uh, something the voters voted for from two to five mills. We started off at two mills. We went to three point one a few years back. So that we could, uh, take care of some other fire department needs, and so far, that's handling its own, and it's gonna be okay with the new firehouse opening up. So I think we're in good shape then.
Anyone else? New business number four is discuss action to adopt resolution eighteen dash thirty-eight setting the millage rate, um, for the bonds.
This is similar to fire district. It's a special district countywide. Um, these are basically to fund. The debt that exists within the county. Um, in the handout that I gave last week, the very back page, and I have a few more of those if anybody needs them. To give the total amounts of the debt, um, two point oh seven doesn't completely fund the debt this year. It uses about two million dollars of, of your existing fund balance that's there. Um. Fund balance exists with debt because some of your debt is paid in August, and taxes are not received until October, November. And then the remaining, for most debt, we pay it in August and in February. Or when the, um, principal and interest come due.
Any discussion? New business number five is discuss action to adopt resolution eighteen dash thirty-nine setting the millage rate for the Paulding County School District.
Can. Can I interrupt and ask go back to new business number four?
Yes, sir. Let's go back to new business number four.
Dave, can I interrupt one second?
Only one interruption minute.
Miss Brazil is here with us, and she wants to speak, um, on special needs. She, she has somewhere she has to be, and I didn't know. When would be the appropriate time to let her speak?
You could do a motion to take the agenda out of order and allow her to speak.
So we, would, if we did that, would we allow her to speak and then go back to number?
Yeah, she would go back, um, to the agenda item you were last on. You would just be allowing her to speak out of the order of the agenda. We have done this kind of thing before.
I'll make a, um, motion that we hold off where we are and allow the citizen to come speak, and we'll get back on the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Poundell, sir, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Crowe. Discussion. Hearing those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Stephanie Ashworth-Brazile, you would come forward and share with us your thoughts, please.
First and foremost, thank you for having me today. Um, I really appreciate your time in allowing me to speak. Um, so today, I wanted to let you know that the special needs community is requesting your support. We have many special needs individuals, both children and adults in this community. That for lack of any other way to put this, um, have been slighted. These individuals do not have recreation needs met. They do not have, um, personal needs met. Um, this extends across the board. Um, so today, what I'm asking for is the ball field at Burnt Hickory Park. Be completed for special needs. This was originally on the, um, the plans for the park, and currently, it's sitting there growing weeds. Um, I also request that we look towards building a playground, uh, to accommodate special needs. And that all parks become ADA accessible and certified. In this community. Have you ever been to the Special Olympics? They're held at Paulding County High School. Do you know how many children participate there? Ballpark, three hundred this past year. That's just a ballpark count. That's not exact. That's not all of the special needs children in this community. That's only the ones. That had the ability and the age to qualify to participate. That's just a small percentage, guys. How many in this room is here to support or has a special needs child or a family member? Y'all, that's just a small quantity in this community. That's not even tip of the iceberg. We need to do what's right for these kids and these adults. They need to have equality in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephanie. Um, I want to assure you that you have the support of this board. You have the support of Michael Justice, and we'll soon be bringing something before this board. But I want to tell you thank you for coming out and. And leading the way in this. Thank you so much.
Hey, we'll return to, um, new business. Oh, we're on.
Item four. We gone back to item four.
Number four.
Number four, which is discuss action to adopt resolution eighteen dash thirty to save the millage rate for bonds.
Okay. We kinda went past that before I felt like we were done.
Okay.
Any discussion on number four?
Yes, um. I'm probably the only one that set out in public over the last few months that there's more to the budget than this. Than just focusing on just the budget of the M and O. The voters voted on a jail. For us to spend up to seventy-seven million dollars. We actually bonded seventy-two million. Tabitha, feel free to tell me anything that I'm wrong with. We bonded seventy-two million, and that project's going on back behind the courthouse now. We bonded that earlier this year. Uh, it was a good time, good decision. It was time to do that, and, um. We, we're gonna be having payments that come out to pay for that. Our first payment's gonna be in this budget cycle. So when we were talking about, when I was talking about in public about the budget and M and O in a six point five mil rate. This board had been back and forth, and different ones of us thought different things, but we were looking at, at that time. Not doing anything with the debt, leaving the bond debt at a mil rate of two point oh seven. And paying it out of fund balance for this first payment this year. So we went through what we've gone through the last four, five, six months. And now it looks like we're probably gonna have a rollback. We still got that debt to pay. And we were gonna do that next year. Because we were trying to balance out things and not put everything on taxpayers' back at one time. Even though to remind you that the taxpayers overwhelmingly voted for the jail. And we were looking at it for a couple reasons. One was if we looked at keeping the six point five, we didn't wanna put that out there on the taxpayers. But two, we wanted to see that jail coming out of the ground. Wanted the public to see that jail coming out of the ground next year when it came to budget time. And then deal with it at that point. But so we've gotta make a decision whether we leave the two point oh seven mil rate. Or we add on point five three, I believe. In order to fund that, which is gonna make that go to two point six zero, not two point oh seven. And so I'm gonna tell you just how it is. Um, we're gonna roll back. Probably this afternoon. Less than what that could go up. And that's why I said earlier, through some conversations out at different meetings, that. There's more to a budget than just focusing on that M and O. So if we do a rollback and we've taken some things out of fund balance in order to make some things work. We still gotta deal with that. Whether we leave that bond. At two point oh seven, or we raise it up to two point six zero because the voters voted on it, and that's what. We will have to do, whether it's this year or next year, or we do something in between this year and then ease the rest up next year. But as it stands right now, two point oh seven doesn't pay the bills, and we're gonna be taking, I think, a little bit shy of two million. Out of fund balance from that to, to be able to pay it. Um, out of the debt fund balance, so. I, I at least wanted to put it out there because two o'clock comes when we vote on something. I don't want somebody to say, well. You know, we didn't talk about that. And, uh. So I guess I talked about that. Put it out there.
Thank you.
Anything else for you, Mr. Chairman, on that issue? Okay.
Anyone else?
No, I, I will say the citizens did overwhelmingly pass the jail. We have already taken out the bonds, so that's something to think about.
Okay, new business number five is discuss action to adopt resolution eighteen dash thirty-nine setting the millage rate for the Paulding County School District.
Okay, the school district goes through this very same process, and they finished theirs, um, a couple of weeks ago, and then they provide you with a letter. And this letter is requesting that you, um, maintain the current millage rate of eighteen point eight seven nine. This is required because you are the tax establishing, um, entity, so you have to approve the millage rate. However, if you don't approve the millage rate that the school system has recommended, um, it goes to court. And in past history, counties have lost, so.
Every time.
Yeah.
So the option is pass it.
That's the only one I see.
I just thought that's what it was.
Any other comments? New business number six, action to adopt resolution eighteen dash forty authorizing the tax commissioner to retain a two point five percent fee for collecting the school tax.
So, um, of this eighteen point eight seven nine that goes out on the county tax bill. You pay that amount to the tax commissioner, and the tax commissioner remits those funds to the school board. That process, this is a sharing, um, arrangement between us and the school board, more or less, to allow them to pay. A portion of our assessment cost, our tax commissioner cost, and any other additional cost that is incurred. In providing homeowners with that bill. And collecting those taxes. And it's two and a half percent, um, which has been the same for as long as I can remember.
So that means they appreciate everything that James Stokes and his team do, right?
That's right. They do. They're very appreciative of James Stokes and his team. And Bill Watson and his team. Don't leave him out. Check wouldn't come if it wasn't for Bill.
Well, and the cost of us doing that for them, if you figure percentage wise, we're right there.
And I, I did that.
That's right.
And it is, um, to, to add up the total cost, and I probably didn't have everything in it.
Right.
And they're, they're remitting about sixty, we're remitting about sixty percent of the taxes collected. They're paying about sixty percent of the, of the cost of that service.
New business number seven, discuss action to adopt the fiscal year twenty nineteen budget.
Okay, so June first, we put a budget out. Um, that's the same one out. There have been. A few ideas that have been tossed around. Um, however, we've only released the one at six point five. So I'll let y'all lead that discussion.
And I know commissioners have come in and had good discussions with you and the county administrator and the operations manager, so I appreciate that, uh, that y'all had that dialogue. And, um, so. I'm sure someone would like to expand on that.
Well, I will first. I'll tell you first if you don't, um, what happens if you go with the six, the. Sometimes the way government works, it's hard, what you're supposed to do in a textbook approach is establish your budget. You establish your budget first. Then you go back and you, um, establish your millage rate. And your millage rate is what funds the amount needed for that, to provide that budget. We all know that's not reality. That's not the way it works. Um, you have to know what citizens are willing to pay for. And then if the citizen's not willing to pay for them, then you have to find another source of revenue or. Another way to pay for it or take it out, eliminate expenses. So if you, if you're not gonna fund it. Fund for the service to be provided, then you have to reduce. Or you're gonna reduce your revenue, not gonna fund it, then you, it's, it's best to take the expense out. So. If by chance you were, the difference between the millage rate, so the six point five and the six point oh seven nine. Is one point eight, a little over one point eight million dollars. So in the budget that you have before you for the June first budget. You have a use of fund balance in the general fund alone, um, of two point eight million dollars. So if you leave this budget. So if you leave this budget, you're using four point six million dollars and a fund balance. Now, several years ago, we have a fund balance policy that requires that you retain at least a minimum of twenty-five percent. That's critical. That doesn't even get us to the first, that doesn't even get us to the first tax bill that's collected. We will be out of money if you go down to twenty-five percent. So you're gonna issue notes, you're gonna borrow money and pay interest on that if you, if you drop to that, to that level. Several years ago, we have a healthy fund balance. We're not at risk of that, but several years ago, we tried to figure out a way that we could use some of the fund balance and, but you can't balance the budget operationally with fund balance. If you do that, you'll run out of money. So if my collections are a hundred thousand every year and every year I spend a hundred and twenty, even if I had two hundred, eventually I'm gonna run out of money. It's no different here. It's the same. So what y'all, what the board, I'm not sure who was in the seats at the time, but decided was that we'll use it for capital expenditures. So if you have a capital one-time purchase, you can make a one-time purchase, but it can't be recurring, so you can't hire people. You can't pay your postage. You can't pay your operational expenses. Those things are coming in year after year after year. You can buy equipment because that's a decision you make this year. It'll be a decision you make next year and you have the ability at that time to say, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna make that purchase. With that, you can't go to four point eight. Your balance and your budget using, you can't use four point eight million dollars in in fund balance because your total expenditures, your total capital purchases in this budget are two point seven. And then you have the one-time capital expenditure at the landfill, which is one point two, but only a hun, two hundred of that is operational. So only a hun, one million of that, so you could go to three point seven. And that's all the fund balance that you can balance, that you can use and say you balanced your budget revenues, recurring revenues and recurring expenditures. So with that being said, it will take some, or I would recommend some modifications to the six-point-five if in fact you're gonna roll it back. And we've talked about some of those. What we've talked about has increased, I have increased some of our revenues. I'm not one hundred percent confident in most of those, in some of those, but I'm ninety-five percent confident. Shop Paulding, that's all I can say. The sales tax revenue for this year increased a million dollars and typically it only increased two hundred thousand. So what drove that other eight hundred thousand dollars, and I have budgeted for that next year, those can be a little risky. We talked about that. If the Department of Revenue made a mistake and sent us, but then they could, in return, want us to pay that back. In the graph that I gave to each one of y'all, it is pretty steady. So it follows the same pattern month to month to month. If it were one month, I'd say, no, okay, something's wrong, but it doesn't appear that way. So that was a million dollars in revenue, additional revenue. We decreased the property taxes by one point eight, if that's the decision that you decide to take. We've, some of the other revenues, we've tweaked just a little bit, not, not anything to talk about today. The expenses, we reduced, there are no new personnel in there. You have two, five detention officers, I think, that are to hire in March, but that's it. No additional, additional personnel. And the capital, we've reduced the capital that was related to any of those personnel primarily. There's a few other capital items that were taken out to reduce the use of fund balance to two million dollars. But it's tight. It's tight. There's no room to move. It's taking revenues and budgeting them at higher than we've probably with a little growth that we hope to see. And it's, your expenditures are being reduced as well.
Questions, comments? So what we need this afternoon to be able to vote and accomplish a budget is communication with you on exactly what those reductions are gonna be.
That has been done. That has been done. We've talked about that.
If, if that's, I have two. I have two. I sent one out late last night. And that's the second one. If that's the one that gets three votes, then it's done. But if you want somewhere in between, then you need to let me know.
We worked on that until about seven and then you stayed and got that out. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, any other discussion on number seven? Number eight is discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve and execute the application for the GDOT fiscal year twenty nineteen local maintenance and improvement grant, L-MIG, in the amount of one million, eight hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy cents and required thirty percent match fund of five hundred fifty thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-one cents to be used to milk, patch, and resurface county roads.
The L-MIG is funded from the state motorfield collection. We've been getting this grant or previous incarnations of the grant called different names for many years now. This is the first time we brought this before the board to ask for approval for the chairman to sign. The L-MIG is a formula-based and ratio-based. Basically, it takes into account your county's population, the amount of road miles that you maintain versus the state population and the amount of state road miles that are maintained. Based on the two thousand nineteen formula, Paulding County will receive one million, eight hundred thirty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy cents in L-MIG funding. By law, we are required to provide a thirty percent match for that funding. Paulding's thirty percent match would equal five hundred fifty thousand, eighteen dollars and forty-one cents. As you had said, you know, we plan to utilize L-MIG for road paving. You can use it for other needs, but typically it's been road paving in Paulding. To receive the funds, we're required to complete an application containing the work to be accomplished, provide a project list, cost estimate, and anticipated let date for this project, which we have furnished. You know, this is a beneficial program for the county as our annual paving costs are well in excess of the L-MIG and match, so we recommend the chairman and the board to approve, to execute this contract. Then I can answer any questions.
Could you repave my path?
Do I have to discuss this in public?
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
Where are we getting the five fifty? Because we talked about that.
We put it in general fund. That was our first option.
And then we have a second option.
We will find the money for this match, yes.
Yes, you can. Thank you.
In Georgia's original request, the five hundred fifty's included in the general fund. And the budgets that we've worked with, there's been no discussion of eliminating anything from DOT. So the budget is, still includes the five fifty in general fund. The option that you have is, and to say we're gonna find the money, there's not a mysterious pot of money somewhere, but we have the SPOST, which does fund transportation projects and it will, you can use those SPOST funds for this project. However, if you do that, the price of construction of those projects is really, really expensive. So this is, the better part could be of one of those, of one of those projects. So it's five hundred fifty thousand dollars away from one of those other projects when this is for your patching and annual maintenance, which is not what you intended for SPOST.
Right.
All right, that's the conclusion of our regular business. We do have executive session for personnel real estate pending and potential litigation. Hopefully that can be concluded before our regular two o'clock meeting. This time, I'll thank everyone again for participating and be involved in the county government, particularly during the tough decisions of making a budget. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel, real estate, pending and potential litigation.
Your motion is our second.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll go to the executive session.